All right. Are we live? Okay, good. So I, we have a lineup of meetings this evening that I want to get moving on. Because I also have been told that we have to be out of here early because, I don't know, there's some game or something on tonight. So, um, so I want to jump in, but, um, before we get into these agendas, I would just ask for a moment of silence for Sergeant Nicholas Latiri, who passed away this weekend after almost 10 years of service in our police department. Thank you. So, um, first lineup this evening are the public hearings. So, um, I'd like to open up the agenda. For the record, today is Monday, April 7th, 2025. It is 6:33 PM in the City Hall Auditorium and we have all council members present and attending in person. And before we open the public hearing, could we kindly stand and pledge the flag? Okay, so public hearings first, uh, the purpose of the public hearing is to solicit citizen input regarding the proposed changes to city, uh, city code of ordinances, chapter 187, entitled taxation, article eight, tax exemption for low income veterans, and an ordinance to discontinue Plain Street. Before we ask for public comment, uh, could I kindly have the public notices read into the record?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 7th, 2025, starting at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit public comment regarding proposed changes to the city's code of ordinances, chapter 187, entitled taxation, article eight, tax exemption for low income veterans. The full text of the proposed revision is available to the public online or in the office of the city clerk. The public may attend in person or by Zoom. Both in-person and online attendees will be granted up to three minutes to comment. Instructions for participating by phone or online are available on the city website. All interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. Dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the first day of April, 2025. Carol Anderson, City Clerk. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 7th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit public comment regarding an ordinance to discontinue Plain Street as shown on a map entitled Right-of-Way Discontinuance Map, Plain Street, Torrington, Connecticut, by Herica Associates LLC, dated February 8th, 2025. Map number 901, scale one inch equals 20 feet. Sheet number one of one drawing 230901-dis, drawn by JLP Project Number 23-901, checked by KSH. The full text of the proposed discontinuance is available to the public online or in the office of the city clerk. The public may attend in person or by Zoom. In-person and online attendees are granted three minutes to comment. Instructions for participating by phone or online are available on the city website. All interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. Dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the first day of April, 2025. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. All right, so at this point, I'm going to open up to the public for comment on either one of these ordinance changes. So, call for public comment. Stacy, did you want to do just some opening comments about the tax exemption for the low income veterans? Okay.
So I'll make it real quick so you can keep the meeting going along. So, uh, what I asked for is a language change to the ordinance so it's more in line with the state statute. With revaluation, one of the things we have to do is look at a revale factor that's applied to veterans exemptions. And I noticed that our local ordinance doesn't line up with state statutes. So I just asked for a language change to include where it says, uh, the revaluation in there to make it more clear.
Thank you. Any questions for Stacy? No? Okay, thank you.
Well Stacy, can I just ask, it says here on clause, or surviving spouse, this exemption apply to a surviving spouse?
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a further comment, it did go through the ordinance committee and was approved and moved, you know, for public hearing. You all voted to have a public hearing, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. All right, so, um, because it is a public hearing, I will do this three times at the risk of, um, missing somebody's opportunity to speak. Again, to the public, is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on either of the, uh, ordinance changes? And the third call, anyone from the public wishing to address the board regarding the ordinance changes? All right, seeing and hearing none, again, I'll do it three times. I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. Declare this public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. We will move into, uh, the regular agenda of the city council. And for the record, it is now 6:39 PM. I will, um, call for, um, a roll call vote with regard to the Plain Street discontinuance. The motion I'm looking for is to approve the proposed ordinance to discontinue Plain Street.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call to my right, Councilman Waldron?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Iveyne?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rouette?
Yes.
Councilman Kevin Arrow? And Councilman Oliver? All right, that's unanimous. Um, we do not have a vote on the ordinance change for the, um, low income veterans. Last week, um, Stacy and I met, uh, this grand list is such a lot of work this time around. So, um, until the final pieces of that, um, grand list are put together, we think it's in the best interest for this just to wait until the next council meeting or, uh, the council meeting in the first week of May. Is that all right with everybody? We're good. Okay, good. Moving into item two. I'll entertain a motion. Again, this will be roll call, uh, to convey a property on Plain Street to ONG Industries, Inc., map block lot number 118-020-018, oh, excuse me, 014, for consideration of $1,000.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spino. Uh, the floor is open for questions. And hearing none. Roll call, again to my right, Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
Councilwoman Iveyne?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rouette?
Yes.
Councilman Kevin Arrow?
Yes.
And Councilman Oliver? All right, moving into item three, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Go move.
Take it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board?
Evening, mayors. Evening, members of the city council. My name is Chief Tom Kalanowski with the Drakeville Volunteer Fire Department. First, um, we want to, uh, make you aware of two main, uh, updates here in light of the Torring Ford closure and the news surrounding that. First, we want to make sure, uh, that you are aware and the community is aware that we are still here. We are membership strong and we hope to continue to be here for many years to come. We are now 20 members strong. We've achieved a 98% reliability rate. We're on track to up that to 100% reliability rate so far. We have trained our guys. We've excelled at getting our trucks out the door at all times of the day. And we made a promise to rebuild several years ago. We have done that. We've done our jobs. Our guys are here behind us today. And with that said, I do want to make this council also aware that we, um, are in financial uncertainty, to put it lightly. We are here to request the full $60,000 that is currently allocated for the volunteer line item. Our current stipend allows us to basically just pay our bills without making any capital expenditures or improvements through the years. Right now, we're operating a 35-year-old frontline apparatus, a 28-year-old brush truck and a 15-year-old tanker with an expected life expectancy of about 10 years. Each year, these expenses grow as the trucks are maintained. We are running out of safe gear to issue our members. We are not able to set aside money to meet these expenses. We're not able to make facility improvements to the building as well to address our aging roof or the 10-inch potholes that are currently in our apron. Our cancer risk is also extremely high. Uh, we start our trucks in the bays and we have no mitigation systems in place for that. A system which would mitigate those risks and may in turn lower the city's workers' compensation rates is beyond our financial means at our current funding level. We work hard to fundraise, but of course, we're not able to make these necessary capital plans with just pancake dinners alone. We have been forced to defer these expenses over the years, but with the council's support today, and as you head into budget season, that could change this year. We are again requesting the full $60,000 stipend, which is already allocated in the volunteer line item. We are not asking for anything additional. We are simply requesting a transfer of the $30,000 that is currently allocated to Torring Ford's budget line item to ours. And as you head into budget season and make these difficult decisions, we hope that you consider our needs and our, uh, aging infrastructure as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the board? All right, we'll move into item number four. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of March 17th, 2025.
Go move.
Thank you.
Take it.
Motion made by Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, an abstention, I'm sorry, for the record, is Councilman, um, Oliver. That's right. All right, moving into the fair housing, I will entertain a motion to appoint Richard Lopez Jr. as Fair Housing Officer for the City of Torrington in accordance with Title VIII Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended.
So moved.
And thank you, I heard Councilman Iveyne and Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so item six, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Uh, this first executive session is... Okay, so, uh, with this motion, um, I'd like to invite Corporation Counsel. Is that just you?
I think just me.
Okay, good, all right. So, uh, the motion I'm looking for is to go into executive session and, uh, invite Corporation Counsel Michael Magistrally.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Second, I missed, uh, Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're gonna get our exercise tonight, gentlemen and ladies.
Oh, well, quite the opposite.
Okay, so, uh, I, um, need a motion to come back into open session. For the record, it is now 7:09 PM. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Rouette. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, um, I need a motion to table, um, item number eight.
Go move.
Thank you.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now I need another motion. Which one is this one? Okay, I need a, um, another motion to go into executive session under CGS, section 200, dash one, subsection six, subsection B, strategy with practice pending litigation. I need to invite into this executive session Corporation Counsel and Attorney Mike Rose.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second, I heard, seconded by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So it is now 7:48 PM. I am looking for a motion to go back into open session.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Oliver. Uh, and, uh, for item 11, I would entertain a motion to table this, uh, motion, um, pending, uh, a follow-up meeting to be scheduled, uh, for later this week.
So move.
Second.
I heard Councilman Kevin Arrow. I heard Councilwoman Spino. Any, uh, it's to table, so I can't call for a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Point of Order?
Yes, Point of Order.
Do we have a time for that meeting, follow-up meeting?
So Heather, yeah. So Heather, um, it looks like the council members are going to be available on Thursday, the 10th, at 4:00 PM. And it will be a Zoom meeting. What's, why, yeah, what's?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Be quick.
Yeah, it will be quick, yeah. Okay. All right. Moving into item 12, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to list for sale property located at 355 Midgen Avenue, map block lot 109-015-006.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne. Second by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item 13, I'll entertain a motion to award emergency replacement of the South Bay Door at the Street Department Garage at 107 Arthur Street to the Torrington, overhead door company for $11,986. Funding will be from Public Works Capital Reserve, uh, all as further explained in Facility Manager's Memo dated March 31st.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Any questions or comments?
Did this come up previously? Was there a, a change?
Right. Or, uh, Jamie's here, I see Jamie's here.
Can you, I didn't hear what you said. You were getting the question?
Did this come up previously, uh, on our earlier agendas?
No.
No, this?
Not for the, this is the south, south door that gets used like 100 times a day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just curious on that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item 14?
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion, uh, by the city council acting here in as water pollution control authority to approve the payments from Fund 490, um, as itemized in the, um, box.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the purchase and installation of a new booking slash sell, uh, cameras and wiring for the police department from Mammoth Security, Inc. of New Britain for $35,771.66 utilizing Massachusetts Higher Education Consortium contract. The Board of Public Safety has approved this and the funding of the project is coming from Police Department capital account, um, as further explained in Police Chief's Memo dated March 26th.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation of Small Cities Committee to approve a change order request from Leak Builders LLC of Oxford for $4,200 for indirect water heater installation at 126 Lawrence Lane.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Waldron. Do, uh, any other information?
Committee met before, beforehand, uh, this is an add-on to a previous project. So, uh, uh, there's, uh, so obviously the, the new value was 32,000. And based on their assessment and liens, there's over $60,000 in equity, so it's safe. So I would recommend that we accept it.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. All right, item 17 is not, uh, a vote. I don't need a motion, but I'd like to invite, um, Richard, um, to the podium to talk a little bit about the, um, branding, imaging, steering committee.
Yeah, it is. Is it, do I point? No. Am I, where am I pointing? Here, there, somewhere? Was it me or was that you?
Oh. How'd you guys get it?
I pressed something. Yeah. I'll let you know to advance then. That's okay. It's all right. All right.
Oh, it's a...
Good evening, uh, mayor? Council members. I just want to come before you to take this opportunity to present before you the findings of the steering committee selected by both the mayor and, uh, our office in economic development, uh, to determine the agreed upon, uh, direction for the citywide branding, uh, strategy for the city of Torrington. As you recall, we have come before you to discuss exactly on this, on Mintz and Hope, which is the preferred, uh, or the selected firm that we, uh, chose to, um, help us create the branding for the city of Torrington, citywide branding, right? Uh, so from slides one through six, I'm not going to go through the whole, whole deck. Uh, but from one through six, it's just pretty much the summary of the information collected by Mintz and Hope, the, the data that they collected, uh, two of which was the foundation for the steering committee's findings and is what they use to kind of formulate their, uh, the things that we are going to be talking about. And once, let's go into slide seven. Good, all right? So with slide seven, uh, it's the beginning of the committee's findings. From here, we begin to discuss, uh, or get deep into, uh, the committee, select the steering committee selection, uh, that was chosen to present, uh, to go through the data that was collected by Mintz and Hope and kind of help us redirect the branding, right? And there's a, one of the big takeaways that I got from the data that was collected after, was presented to us by Mintz and Hope was, um, the overwhelming consensus that we found with the steering committee's, uh, message and clear path for the direction of the brand and this, where the brand will be taken after, uh, Mintz and Hope, uh, takes their two to three weeks to kind of collect everything and create to us the package that we've tasked them to do at hand, right? So, next slide. So with the first session, right, uh, it really reinforced, uh, the, the perception already found, uh, through Mintz and Hope's studies earlier and their work. And it really did produce, uh, again, the, it gave us the clear direction and, and it really already reinforced and kind of, uh, restated that the items and the data that was already, uh, told to us, expressed to us, the perceptions that were already, uh, brought across to us, right? And in session number two, it really, they really dove deep into the creative of the, of the branding and it produced a clear direction for the tone and the visuals, uh, that the creative team will then take on to create the imagery that we're going to be seeing, uh, in the future. Uh, the steering committees, uh, the participants were consistent for both sessions, right? They were very active. We were told that they're a dynamic group, a group that was very diverse in their perspective, in their thoughts. And Mintz and Hope was very pleased with the outcomes. They were happy with the group that was chosen. Uh, they were very, uh, pleased to know that although it was a very diverse group of people, again, a consensus was found and it was able to find a good direction for the brand moving forward. Next slide. So I'm just going to quickly read through, uh, a few of the quotes, uh, there, yep. A few of the quotes that, that, uh, that really kind of resonated with the, the brand at large, the messaging that we're trying to get across with the branding. So, uh, the first quote is, "One of the issues is the language barrier, right? Communication needs to be in multiple languages. That's kind of evidence, and we know this, but it was great to hear this once again stated. We, the city of Torrington, we're, we're a growing community, but the community itself is seeing a lot of multicultural individuals coming into the city, right? Different backgrounds, different, uh, cultures coming in and how good is it for us to then amplify that as well? We, as a city, being able to produce information, both in all, obviously in English, but also in other languages that are, that are needed, so that way we can be able to commit to all individuals, all residents across the board." Uh, next quote is, "I moved here a few years ago, and I love it here. There, there's ability to grow. It's beautiful. I can see why people from New York, um, to live here, right? And that's, that's the beautiful thing about it, Torrington, right? People are coming into here, they're, they're seeing the potential that Torrington has to offer. They're seeing what Torrington is and they want to be part of that growth happening here." And next quote is, "Torrington is great, but I hope we were able to present it in an honest, light, good, bad, or indifferent. Each city has liabilities. Don't market the liabilities, but be honest." And that's kind of the key with this marketing, uh, strategy, right? Is we're trying to be as honest as we can, giving all the information at the forefront, but at the same time also uplifting the city, uh, in moments when we can, showing that, you know, there are good things for the city. Of course, understanding we are a city, with a city, there are a lot of things that come with it, but let's also promote the, uh, the good things that are going on throughout the city of Torrington. Uh, the next quote is, "The hard reality is Torrington needs to attract businesses," right? And that's something that we already know. Our taxes, our tax rate is so high and our loss of revenue with buildings closing. Marketing has to dovetail with what the ECD is doing. And that's exactly what, uh, what we are trying to do with our office of, Office of Economic Development, using this branding to elevate the city, to put, poised the city in a way that we can attract those businesses, attract those individuals to come into the city of Torrington, to invest into the city of Torrington and to be able to elevate the city where it is currently to that next level, right? And we'll achieve that through this, uh, branding with the creative messaging, making sure that, again, always keeping the facts at the forefront, but also using creative design as well. And then the, the next quote was, "As a manufacturing town, Torrington used to produce some of the finest products in the world. Civic pride was so high. Over the last 25 years, things have changed. We can't even have civic classes in this generation. We can't find people to serve." And that's, I mean, that is, uh, a fact that is occurring right, um, this last 25 years in the city of Torrington, uh, we, we've noticed that, we've seen that, the decline of the iconic manufacturing within the city, right? The Torrington Company, Hoshkus Brothers Mill and everyone else, right, involved with this. But Torrington is still making good things. We're still producing high-quality products. We just need to elevate those industries that are kind of tucked away within the city and bring them back to the fold for the public to understand that, yes, although we're no longer that type of manufacturer, we're still creating things. It's just letting them know where they are, who they are, if they're, if, where they're located. And the final quote is, "I've never heard of it referring to 'it's happening here,' but it sounds like it comes from a place of defensiveness. It leaves room to disagree or otherwise argue the point." And this was another consensus across the board with the group. They don't like "it's happening here." They did not see that there was a point towards "it's happening here," and, which is fine. That was the point of the steering committee, to really find what we're doing currently and how we can improve upon that. And that was the point of figuring out, fine, if it's, if it's not "it's happening here," what is it, right? So that's kind of the, the task for Mintz and Hope is to help us redefine the city. What is that next step, that next phase for the city of Torrington? Next slide. So now we're going to get right into the, uh, a bit deeper into the, um, the creative bit of the sessions, right? For session one, it was kind of laying the, the framework, the, the foundation of the, of the studies that were happening with Mintz and Hope. And now we're getting into the creative pieces of what we'll then be able to use to really define the visuals of the branding for the citywide, uh, marketing, uh, strategy, right? So, uh, with this first exercise, it was a percept, uh, perceptual map exercise that the, the group undertook and where they created a, a map with two axes showing historic and modern on one, but emotive and functional on another axis to kind of, with different logos of different municipalities, uh, similar to ours, but also getting on their other types of fields. Uh, and it's, it was exploring what potentially could be the brand for the city of Torrington, what could be the thing that we can create or emulate, um, moving forward. So next slide. There, there, yeah. There, there you go. So right then and there, it's a lot to take. It's a lot of stuff, a lot of images, but I want you to kind of get in the mindset of the steering committee, what they were thinking, what they were visualizing. And from the get-go, I want to just let, let you know that they loved the Bristol logo, they loved Erie, Stratford, Manchester, and Brown. Those were the ones that they really identified with when, when they were shown these images. They were gravitated toward these, and I don't know, so if you can see Bristol is like the center of the map, and then we see Erie, which is kind of lowered to the next of Bristol, and then Stratford and Manchester are the ones that are opposite each other across one another. And then Brown is the one that's kind of modernistic with this approach, right? But one of the logos and one of the images that they hated, or did not like rather, they, they're, they're very displeased with rather, let's say it that way, was for Warwick, Rhode Island. And if you don't know which one it is, it's the one that's on the very top, right top corner there with the words that kind of show something. They didn't really get that one, and that's fine. That was kind of the exercise they were trying to get across from this. But going back to Bristol, Connecticut, they, the group really kind of was gravitating toward this imagery, more so because of the cog, the gear that we see here in the, that was incorporated within the B. They, they really enjoyed seeing that, those types of imagery within the incorporation of the branding. But they also expressed that they themselves have seen this type of imagery used throughout the town of Bristol when they drive by, when they're visiting Bristol. They, they've noticed it be used across the board. So there is a lot of buy-in when it comes to, when, when it came to Bristol's branding. And so trying to also incorporate that as well within the city's branding. So if we go to the next slide. We kind of, again, we see the, the, why they were gravitating toward these types of imageries, why they didn't really like Warwick. So if we go next, to the next slide. Going back to now focusing on Torrington and what, what, how we can incorporate those, that exercise into the Torrington's brand. The first thing we see here is that there's equity built in the Torrington Town Seal, right? So the people wanted to see in some fashion, some form, the seal of, of the city be incorporated within the, the brand itself, right? How can we use the city seal to incorporate the branding at large? But they also wanted to see the, the iconic Torrington T that is currently, or will be eventually put up at the high, new high school, right? That Torrington T is an iconic icon, right? It's, it's the thing that everyone knows and loves, and, and it's connect, there's some sort of passion, there's tie-in with the arts, but also with the manufacturing history. And so there's pride with that, that imagery. There's some, there's pride within it all. And so trying to figure out how we can incorporate that type of structure as well within the branding. And then back again to "it's happening here" and that branding. Well, as you see right then and there, it's, it's very overwhelmingly understood, right? It's bland, it's boring. I don't know what the little thing on the left of the word Torrington is. They don't understand what that might be. I don't see its connection with their art deco architecture. It means nothing to me. If you decide to ditch it altogether, right, there would be applause, right? That's what the overall consensus is. I don't like it. Get rid of it. Throw it away, which is fine. We, we understand that, but we also understand, taking this information, understanding and digesting it, we're like, okay, all right, that's fine. Then what's next? We're ready for that new change, that next step. What is that next thing for the branding for the city of Torrington at large, right? When we go to the next slide, we see here, again, the group really gravitated towards that side of the, of the chart, which was emotive and functional, but historic at, at the same time, right? It's emotive, it is, it's emotive with the branding, but it's also very functional, but it maintains the historic nature, right? We're, we're a city that's functional, but we're also historic in nature. So keeping those tie-ins as well allows us to be able to provide some sort of imagery that really, really evokes and really calls to what the city is calling for, what the city is yearning for, right? Next slide. Okay. And so that, then this, this is the final exercise that the group kind of took on, and I really want you to kind of digest and really, sinking with all the information that we're going to talk about right now, because it's very, very intensive visually. There's going to be a lot of imagery thrown at you at this moment. So I really want you to kind of take it all in and really observe and, and understand what the committee was going through when they were doing it as well, right? So the mood board exercise is really showing several versions of colors and images and shapes to kind of evoke a feeling, right? Solicited input from the group to get that feeling that they're, that gut reaction of what they felt when they were seeing those images. And it allows them to then, from that gut reaction, get a sense of what the proper direction is for our branding, what our color scheme, and how we should approach the imagery of the brand. So let's go to, jump to 28, yep, next slide. So let's just take a moment. I want you to really observe this slide here. I want you to take it in, you know, look through it, kind of really kind of observe the, the items that are being displayed here. Okay. Let's go to the next slide. This is mood board number two. Again, just really observe it, take it in. What, what is the first thing that comes to mind when you see this image?
I, I sort of made, yeah.
Okay. Was there a comment for the first slide? I, I didn't ask, I'm sorry. What's your comment? Let's go back to the first one.
I liked the, the Main Street picture on the
Sure.
Next slide.
Yeah.
I think we, we have a great downtown Main Street area.
Let's go back to the second, second mood board. Any comments here? Or we want to proceed with the next one?
Yeah, the top left there.
Yeah. Okay. Next slide.
Looks too busy to me.
Busy, okay.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I was hoping like there's, I see shaking heads.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Sorry.
So again, don't, I just want you to understand the kind of the exercise here. It's pretty much looking at the colors overall, not really honing on a one specific item, right? Because it's pretty much trying to evoke, what is that gut reaction, right? The same way that the mayor expressed with the first. The second one, you know, what is that, when you see it overall, what, what is that feeling that comes to mind, right? The next slide. Any comments here on this one?
No, move on.
No, okay. Next slide?
Yeah.
That's fine, I mean, it's
Well, it's just kind of blase.
Sure.
You know, it doesn't have, it, it's not representative of Torrington in my mind at all.
And
Well, well, the Ts are interesting, just in black and white, I, I'm not sure it does the
No, again, it's, it's not, well, they're trying to
It's like a polyp, you know?
Okay. That's valid, that's a very valid comment.
It looks like, you know.
Listen, Paul and I went through these steering committee meetings, so we are, we're refraining from our comments.
Yeah. We're waiting to just agree with everybody else. At least I am.
Yeah. Yes, I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting, of the six members that were of the steering committee, the two members that were from the city council perspective was Ann Rueda and Paul Cavanero were also on that committee as well. And I think that there's another one, yeah. That's the, is that the final one?
Looks like Twilight Zone.
One more, okay. So there's this one, and then there's another one at the end of this one. And then the last one? So I'm going to go, we're going to go through them again, but now with the perspective of the steering committee, what they were talking about, what they were saying, what they were thinking about it. So you've already now digested the, the full spectrum of the, the mood boards, right? They're meant to evoke some sort of emotion, kind of get you to think like, you know, and again, reflecting to Torrington, is this Torrington? Is this what we want to present when we talk about Torrington, right? So going to the second board. So yeah, there you go. With this one, one of the committee members was, "We need to come from a place of confidence, pride, welcoming, beauty, and a family in our creative," right? So the quote is, "There's a sense of community that people from here feel." I see it in, in board number two, which is this one here. "Come here and make yourself at home. We have a quiet confidence." I, I love that quote. Quiet confidence, not boastful, we're not boastful, but it's here, right? So there's, there's a humbleness to it. You're humble, but you're also proud of where you're coming from. You're proud of who you are. You're proud of the city itself. And for this committee member, that's what they felt when they were seeing this imagery here displayed, right? And so then when we jump to the next one, number three, the one that you, you say it was a bit busy, right? One of the members had said, "Three main elements should be used: nature, vibrancy, industrial." So that, that was the comment, right? And how they are really relative to one another, to each other, right? Nature, vibrancy, and industrial. So the quote is, "I like showing downtown, classic New England, the city branding of Sophia visual in number three symbolizes pride and military traditions, but also moving forward, moving forward, attracting new people and new businesses, includes some of city photography, and then vibrant colors." So when they're referring to city of Sophia branding, it's the one, if you see where the horse is, the guy and the horse and the pedestal, that imagery right there. So with that imagery, it's pretty much showing the, the ability to use some, some sort of simplistic imagery, you know, referring back to historic images, but then using the historic images at the forefront and then putting at the background some sort of image coloring to give it some pop and to help it push forward the message that it's trying to get across that, yes, we're historic, we're also modern at the same time. We're historic, we're, we're industrial, but at the same time, we're, we're innovative and we're refreshing and we're vibrant as well. And then on the board number six, which is the last one. This one, one of the committee members said is, "Torrington was purpose-built." So that's what they're referring to, right? So it's, "Number six feels like modern, industrial. There's so much being made here. It's in our DNA. We were built on a river to make things." I like that comment. We were built in a river to make things. And, and this still holds true today, right? We're, we're a city, an industrial city, that again, going back to what we were finding in findings in session number one, we're a city that's still making a lot of good, innovative, creative, industrial, technological advances within the city, and it's highlighting it and this, with this board is kind of giving off that. And finally, going back again to board number two, which again, with board number two, the, the committee really gravitated toward this board a lot. They were really anchoring and pushing for this board to kind of at the forefront of the branding itself, because for them, it all felt the more muted natural colors were more authentic to Torrington and aligned with three main elements, again, going back to nature, vibrancy, and industrial. But they also agree that there were opportunities to incorporate brighter colors as well, going to the mood board number three. So with this one, they liked the natural muted tones of board number two. They felt good, blue for sky and green feels welcoming, but adding on the colors, a bit of color that pops allows the two to blend together, to give balance from one another, right? So the muted colors in board number two, it felt, it anchored them, it felt that they were, you know, gave them that sense of, if you go back to board number, the prior one, number two. It felt like, for them, it was like, it felt like home, right? It was a sense of, of belonging with these colors and something that, that the mayor had expressed when we were meeting with the committee, the Minson Hope team. She had mentioned that, for example, that, that red and the yellow, kind of, for her, it evoked the bricks in our downtown, in our Main Street, right? The buildings there, you can see the imagery there, but then the blues and the greens, it feels like the nature that provides in the city as well. We have two state parks and a lot of trails in the city and a lot of things to offer for nature, in, in the nature aspect as well. So there's a lot of things going on here that really does evoke Torrington as well and at large, but with number, with the next mood board, number three, with mixing these colors and sometimes mixing those colors, balancing each other out kind of, kind of works. It worked for the, the steering committee, it worked for them, and it's kind of the direction that the steering committee was kind of bringing us and telling us for this branding at large. So if you go back to number two? So now, what are the next steps, right? So the committee has concluded their findings. These are the findings that they provided to Minson Hope. What are those next steps? What are, what are they going to be doing next? Well, Minson Hope, after taking all these findings and taking everything that they, that they had received from the steering committee from session one and two, they have been tasked to now develop the branding at large. They've been tasked to now create what is the imaging, the branding for the city using all their findings. And one of their first tasks is to create the website brand guidelines that we will be submitting to the Civic Plus team before the second, 22nd of April, which is the deadline that the website team has given to, to us, to relaunch the city's website. The current website right now is in need of much improvements, and Civic Plus has been tasked to relaunch our website. And one of the things that they have asked us is, what is the new branding for the city? Will we be keeping the same colors that are currently on our old website? Are we refreshing that one? And so we're trying to tie in the work that Minson Hope has been doing and what we're trying to do with the website to have that synergy across the board. And hopefully by the 22nd of April, we'll be having the basics of the brand, which is color scheme, fonts, and basic orientation, guidance for imagery. And that will be, hopefully, the website will be launched in July of 2025, so this year. That's kind of the, the direction, that's the hope that we're trying to keep on, on timeline with, with the website. And then, and simultaneously, as they're creating this and rushing the, the job for the website team, they will be, also be tasked to develop the overall branding for the city, the citywide branding strategy as well, creating, as we already heard, the steering committee wants something different than "it's happening here." So what is that new tagline, right? What is that thing that we're going to be using to promote the city at large? What is that, that statement that we're going to be using to push the, the campaign? What is that new logo? Is, is there a logo that we're going to be incorporating with all this after their findings with the steering committee? So all of those findings will be happening pretty much simultaneously. The website guidelines would be coming first, and then subsequently we'll then, we'll get the full brand guidelines as well within the coming weeks and hopefully before the, the end of the, of next month, right? So, so that's the findings. I am now open this for any questions from the council, if there's any.
Good.
Good, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, you know, and I just have to say, appreciate the work that Minson Hope is, has been doing, but I really can't express enough how grateful I am that our economic development director and, and the community development liaison is doing, coordinator is doing, because I think the design we get is the direct result of what we put into it. So the steering committee, the businesses and the people that were interviewed, I think really did inform this process. So I'm excited to see the final, the final draft. Good.
Just a comment from being a member of the steering committee, and I'm sure Paul has his own comments too, but it was a really diverse group. One of the individuals was a high school student, I think she's a junior. I, you know, it, it, she energized me in some of the comments that she had, and, and I think still the pride of Torrington in that generation came through, so.
She's from my mayor's committee on youth.
Yes, she said that, yeah.
Yeah, she's great.
I behave myself, so.
You're good.
That's also interesting.
Very good.
I'm glad.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the steering committee really sort of like pulled this all together for us, so I, I do, I greatly appreciate the work you put in.
And thank you to Richard for all your work on it. It was, he's got so much energy as well, so.
Good. All right. I want to keep us moving along, moving into item 18. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize tax refunds indicated on list of April. Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item, any opposed? I should have offered that. Item 19, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize sewer use refunds as indicated on list dated April 7th.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, and second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on this list? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Item 20, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Oliver. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? To the room, anything to add this evening, William from Economic Development?
Very quickly, give a shout out to Richard. I hope, I think the city recognizes what a dynamic and creative young man he is and the talents he brings to the city. But I want to publicly recognize, because the way, the effort he's put into this brand development project has been exemplary and extraordinary. So congratulations.
Oh, you made him blush. All right. Anything from facilities this evening, Jamie? Okay, thank you. Dan, anything from the treasurer's office? No. Ray, anything public works? Okay. City clerk's office? Corporation counsel?
Nothing.
Okay, good. All right. Moving into item 21, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Starting to my left this time, anything, Councilman Oliver?
Nothing.
Thank you. Councilman Cavanero?
Sure, one thing, and hopefully I'm expressing this for the people. Torrington just like to congratulate the UConn women's team on an extraordinary tournament, took no prisoners, and made us all proud. So I'd just like to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Well said. Councilwoman Rueda?
I did a comment. It was exciting to see that win last, yesterday. But I also think you made an announcement this week, our mayor of 12 years, almost 12 years. Very proud to have served under your administration and continue to for the next nine months. You have made inroads through the city of Torrington and all that you've done. It's quite amazing. And again, I'm proud and humbled to have served with you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councilwoman Spino, don't repeat any of that.
Okay, I echo what Ann has to say, but other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Iveyne?
I will also second Ann's comments and Molly's comments and add a few of my own. It was, yes, it's been a tough role. It's always in the public spotlight, and you did it well. So thank you for your your public service, and it goes back farther than just being mayor, but you were on Board of Education and I believe other committees, so it's a long record of public service. So it's to be appreciated by everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Councilwoman Waldron?
Oh, congratulations, mayor. It was great, great announcement and, you know, good luck in the future and enjoy your retirement.
Oh, I know. So you're not rid of me yet. I still have eight months. And I feel like I'm gonna like load as much as I can on in those eight months. But I know that this job could never be done without, you know, the the kinds of council members, Board of Finance members, Board of Ed members that also step into these public roles. I have plenty of opportunities to acknowledge all of the work that all of you bring to the table to make this job easier. And when I stood before that wall and took that photograph, I meant every word of it. Everything that we do is building on everything they've done. The people that went before us and the people that walk with us make this job easier. So we have a lot of work to do in the next eight months, and I'm looking forward to it. Is that my exit song? Is that my walk-off song?
Closing.
What is that?
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you. It's like the, it's like the Academy Awards when the music plays, I'm supposed to stop, right? All right, I'm gonna move into item 22 and open this back up to the public for comment on agenda items only. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone from the public? Seeing and hearing none? I'm gonna move into item 23. I need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CGS, section 200 dash 1 subsection 6 subsection capital B, concerning contract negotiations. In this executive session, I need to invite our Public Works Director, Ray Drew, our COG, Economic Development Director, you all know her, Rista Malanka, and Corporation Counsel. Do I have that motion?
I'll move.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Spino and Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
We can stay here, right?
We'd have to kick all those people out, so no, we'll go in the other room.